Everyone involved in the preparation of the documents and for answering our questions related to the agenda items, for those of you that are new to the meetings, we have a work session that we had last week where we discussed each and every one of these items. And questions were addressed and answered by the board. The board addressed the questions. And thank you to staff for all of your support in answering these questions for us and for clarifying things. So we'll go ahead and start, call the meeting to order. And do we have any additional public comment, Mr. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started on item.
No, that's what I was preserving my time for, public comments.
Okay, that's fine. We'll go ahead and, do you want to go ahead and come on up, Mr. Bennett? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
If you don't mind just announcing your name and then I can jet it here. Thank you.
Daniel Bennett.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bennett.
So the issues I'd like to address, one is budget related, but it's more into the future. There was a statement that our buying power under the bond issuance in 2019 has already been depleted by 25%. Now, we have ongoing projects and we have projects slated to begin. If they're underfunded because of everything through the supply chain issues, during the cursory inflation, as per Mr. Biden, I think it's permanent, but then there's projects we should not start and we should put the brakes on and return that money back to the bond, people that bought the bonds and lower our debt. That way, the INS sinking fund, you don't have to be shifting $5 million over to it and then raising our taxes and that's your justification. Also, I want to do, I do want to talk about the appraisal district. I was here before this body on the ninth of August requesting that you send a letter to the appraisal district demanding the resignation of Catherine Wildman. You heard a little bit tonight of a small fraction from people, people that vote for you all and how they were treated and what has occurred. I doubt very seriously if you all sent that letter. Now, Mr. Barr made the motion to put her on that board. It went four to two. Ms. Morrison, she voted no. Ms. Wood voted no. There was also a motion for Mr. Lasada. That motion failed, two to four. Ms. Morrison voted for Mr. Lasada. Ms. Wood voted for Mr. Lasada. The rest of the board voted against Mr. Lasada back in the, back in the fall. So Wildman got 154-year votes. She needed a minimum of 700 to get on that board. This body put her over. This body is the reason she sits where she sits. This body's the reason these people were treated the way they were treated. And you have not done the dignity of this board to request her resignation because apparently you agree with her behavior. And I think that's hard to stomach on my hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Someone else said that they wanted to speak. Yes.
Just for point of information, you had two agendas tonight. They're posted on the website. You had a hearing, it's at 102, for whatever you, you had a hearing about, a meeting about the hearing, and then you have your regular meeting. You had a special meeting and a regular meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so there, I just want to make sure that everybody here who wants to speak during public comment for this regular meeting is not intimidated from speaking. They have the ability to speak. I mean, I saw six or seven names on the list.
Right. Those are the names that we called earlier. What, I'm sorry, what is your name again?
Sure. My name is Joe Palmer. I'm in District Seven.
Okay, thank you.
So anyway, thank you for that.
Thank you.
You've got, you know, we come up here, we ask you to cut the rate, and I would imagine that if I were in your position, I would wonder, or I would think, that's great. You want me to cut your taxes. Who doesn't want lower taxes? But what do you want me to cut out of the budget? I understand that you've got a line item in your budget, or you've got an item that's going to be addressed, $488,000 for internet for 2,000 some odd tablets that were distributed during COVID or for the purpose of COVID. Are these tablets still out there? Why are we continuing to pay, or why are you going to vote to continue to pay for internet access when we're back to in-person? And another item that you have on your agenda is for a rental agreement for a piece of property. I think it's Northwest Fort Worth, Northwest Tarrant County between TCC and Fort Worth ISD. It's a rental agreement, a 30-year rental agreement. I did some math. It's $31,000 a month to rent this facility for college preparedness. You know, TCC handles college, Fort Worth ISD handles high school. Why not just sell them the property? I imagine the net impact on a taxpayer would be zero, whether they rent from you or you rent from them. But I just think, you know, would this be a good idea to do this over and over again? I would say no. Let's just keep it, keep it separate. A little bit earlier, I mentioned Milton Friedman, The Economist, The Four Ways You Can Spend Money. The spending of other people's money on other people is the most dangerous because you don't fully appreciate, you can't fully appreciate the amount of work and labor that went into making that money. And you also are not fully on the hook and you don't bear the full brunt of the risk when the money is wasted. If the money is wasted, if it's a disaster, you can just say, I had the best intentions. And it's real easy to want to be judged by your intentions alone, but I would encourage you to pretend like you're running a business. Pretend. So that if you ran this thing into the ground, there would be no protection. There would be no way that you could just open up the spigot and get more revenue. Pretend like you're forced to provide a product that you will be held accountable. If you approach this this way, I don't think that you would be voting for the proposed tax rate. And I would also urge, I would have liked to have gotten this information before tonight's meeting. Well, first of all, did you look at the budget? Were you given a copy of the budget before tonight? That's one question I have. Another question I have is, do you know what the rate would be that would trigger a ballot, that would trigger voter approval? Please ask that question tonight for the benefit of the public. I would like to know how far away the proposed rate is from that rate. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments as well. Okay, no further comments. We'll go ahead and go on into the board business items and announcements. We'll start out with item 3A, approval of special meeting of the Board of Trustees minutes for August the 9th of 2022. Does anyone have any questions or clarifications on that?
I move for approval.
Okay, move for approval by Mr. Greenhill, second by Mr. Barr. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item 3B, approval of Board of Trustees meeting minutes from August the 18th of 2022. Any questions, clarifications on that?
I have approval.
We have approval from Dr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hornsby. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're going into trustee activities. We're just going to start out with Dr. LeBlanc because we have the special recognition for a student, if you don't mind, Dr. LeBlanc kicking this off, and then we'll go on to the other trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. So first, I want to point out that our editor from the Collegian is here, and she mentioned to me just now that the new Collegian is out announcing the increase in enrollment. So we have had a 7%, over 7% increase in enrollments from last year at this time. So we're, we're making great progress and I appreciate that you took notice and put that in your paper. So thank you for that. Also, we have Jose Romero. So that is last year's editor in chief of the Collegian. And he was selected to first class of a nationwide mentorship program sponsored by The New York Times in the first class of 20 students. And he's the only individual from Texas. The others are from other states. So we're really proud of Jose. He currently attends UTA because he completed his work at Tarrant County College. And he continues to write. He serves on the Shorthorn UTA Student Newspaper. And can I impose on you to say just a few words about your experience at Tarrant County College?
Yeah, do you want me to walk up?
Right up here. Yes, sir.
Excuse me.
You get, you get your photo taken this time.
Hi. So yeah, Tarrant County College was very much so the beginning of my career in journalism. And with Chris Whitley and Stacy Luker's support as my advisors, I would not have gone as far as I did. The journalism program here, as weird as it sounds, means a lot to me. My, I initially started in nursing, and that's kind of what I was planning on doing. But as I discovered more of my passion for writing and of course, coming here and taking the classes, I shifted entirely. And I, you know, there's a lot of regrets you make in life, but that is something I won't be regretting anytime soon.
Very nice. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
We wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you and to the Collegian staff. We know they do a phenomenal job there with our students. So thank you for all your work. And we wish you the best. Okay, we'll start out with Dr. Morrison, please.
Thank you. Good evening.
Yes, good evening.
Thanks, everyone, that we're off to a great fall semester. Glad to hear about the increased enrollments. I got several calls, and these young people would say, my granny says you can help me with TCC. Are you an academic advisor? That was the person that everybody needed to see to get into school. Thank you. I am so excited tonight to share another success story because it involves a young person that has taken advantage of an opportunity to complete high school and college as a graduate of the Crowley Collegiate Academy and the Crowley Independent School District. Kendall, if you'll start making your way to the front, the person of whom I speak is Kendall Locke. And he has shared his story several times with us. Earlier this week, he shared a letter from the graduation office at UNT letting us know that this year in December, he will actually earn his bachelor's degree. So Kendall, if you could just share a little bit about your journey and your aspirations.
Sure. Well, thank you, Dr. Morrison, and glad to be here with trustees and Dr. LeBlanc. Appreciate the opportunity. I'm simply here just to say thank you. I walked in in August of 2016, just to give you a little context, in August of 2016, walked into the Bill R. Johnson CTE Center in Crowley ISD. Initially, I was slated to go to North Crowley High School, but I made a crazy decision to go to early college high school. And at least at the time, I thought it was crazy. It was new to our district. I didn't know what to expect. And so I was walking into something completely new. But not only starting my freshman year, but starting my first semester as a college student earning my associate's or working towards earning, at the time, my associate's arts degree. And so it was an interesting journey, but it's a journey that I am definitely grateful for and that I'll carry with me throughout the rest of my life. To be able to graduate in 2020, the year of craziness, with not just my high school diploma, but also my associate's arts degree in humanities, definitely has set me on a path that, you know, I'm always going to remember and that I always carry with me. Being able, as a high school student, a junior, to be on the TCC Tarrant County College South Campus, actually walking the campus, having classes at the college, interacting with college professors, interacting with college advisors, is an experience that even now at UNT, I'm still thinking back to some of those things that I did at TCC as, you know, being in high school and early college high school students. So needless to say, as Dr. Morrison mentioned, I will graduate in December with my Bachelor's of Arts in Political Science, minoring in Criminal Justice from the University of North Texas. But of course, only with two years. So I graduated in 2020, and now we're in 2022, and I'm already graduating with that bachelor's. And I'd like to also mention that, of course, early college high school is made available to students for free, which was definitely a great opportunity for my family. And luckily, I've been blessed to not have to take out any loans or pay anything for my bachelor's degree. And so I'm hoping that we can stay on that path for whatever my graduate work will look like. But I'm just here to say thank you. Thank you all for your support. Thank you all for the work that you do across Tarrant County to help students like myself and have programs that are truly preparing students for success, not just in the realm of academia, but of course, moving through to our professional journey. And special thanks to Dr. Morrison for your continued support in all my endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kendall, could you tell us what you're doing now?
Yes, sir. So in 2021, I was still in high school, but of course, it was the municipal election. And I got a call from one of our current elected officials, Dr. Jared Williams, who serves on the Fort Worth City Council, to be his district director. And so I currently serve in that role as well as, of course, being a full-time college student. But again, an opportunity that, you know, was granted through opportunities provided through TCC, leadership opportunities, and being able to engage with people, you know, of course, throughout the community. And so currently serving in that role and finishing up my degree.
That's great. Proud of you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm happy to say, yes.
Thank you for coming, Kendall.
And I will say this to any parents and grandparents, if you see scholarship applications out there, encourage your young people to take time to make those applications. Kendall was very diligent about doing that, and I'm sure that some of those scholarships that he was awarded have helped him along the way. So thank you and congratulations, Kendall.
Congratulations, Kendall. Thank you.
May I go ahead with my other two items?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
I was pleased to be a part of an activity which brings together elected officials across the metroplex September the 10th. Actually, it was a three-day event in Dallas on the campus of Paul Quinn. The whole idea was to advance and inform through research and teaching the political decision-making process to empower and to promote leadership in the African-American community. But what I want to say is, these, these skills promote a leadership throughout the entire community. And it was an important event, and it was well-attended. And the work goes on. As you can see, there is a day of action that's scheduled as a result of that for Saturday, October the 1st. And that will be calling community organizations to work, to do more work. There's an event that I don't have a flyer for, my apologies. One of our TCC Northeast Campus students, Madison Corzine, is the Tarrant County Chair for National High School Voter Registration Day. Some of you may know that the state legislature requires all high schools to offer the opportunity to age-eligible high school seniors to register to vote. And that is coming up on Tuesday, September the 20th. And Madison is the chair, and will be holding a seminar to encourage the conversation about the reason that we encourage high school seniors to go ahead and get registered and to prepare to be an informed voter. Participating with her will be Commissioner Brooks and Hyda Garcia, who is the election administrator for Tarrant County, as well as other elected officials and community supporters. And for the next 10 days, from September 20th through October 11th, there will be a push at high schools across Tarrant County to have voter registrants on campus and available so that high school seniors who are age-eligible can vote, can get registered to vote in the fall. And there'll be another day in the spring. So we want to congratulate Madison for that. She is a high school senior, but she's also a sophomore at TCC Northeast Campus. And she's also Miss Juneteenth, DFW 2022. It's important that we encourage and support people of all ages and especially our young people. And in that vein, I want to invite all of you to make a note on your calendar. The date has actually been moved to give you a little heads-up. November the 10th will be celebration of the intergenerational community conversation. And the whole purpose of it is to bring all of the seven generations together to discuss important issues relevant to the community. It will again be hosted on the South Campus, which is the original Tarrant County College campus. And this will be the 11th year. And so not only have we endured 10 years of very vigorous and engaging conversation, but we are embarking on this new speak, the new conversation, talk from engaging all aspects of the community and all generations. So we look forward to having you join us on that date. So save the date on your calendar for Thursday, November the 10th.
Thank you.
On South Campus. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And that's, that's a really great event. For those of you that have not participated, I had a chance to serve on a panel with Ray Davis, and it was a very good conversation. And I just really admire the way that you bring in the young people to get involved in the, and I can just imagine, you probably had some that were very young children at one time, and they're now already getting called. and they're now already in college participating in these. So, congratulations to you on that event.
Thank you. And it gives us an opportunity to hear from elders of all ages, 96, 98, whatever, years old, all the way down to 10 years old.
10 years old, exactly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Greenhill, do you want to share some of your activities, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Several of us went to a Rotary event. Several of us are on the agenda here to talk about it, but I'm the photographer, so I guess, is it, do you have the picture? Nope. I took a picture of her. Go ahead. Anyway, we went to an event in which there was a panel to discuss what are, what we call the T3 partnerships and the importance that it has on our community and the education of our students. Elba, will you kind of give us a brief summary of what that is? Because your summary is better than anyone that could possibly do it.
I'm happy to do that. We were talking, the whole conversation was about the T3 program, which is a partnership between the public schools, universities, and Tarrant County College. And it's giving students a greater opportunity to be college-ready, to take college courses and move on to a university. Initially, it was thought that all of the students would start at the university level. And we're discovering that the students that start at Tarrant County College not only do extremely well, but the universities really would prefer that they start at the, at Tarrant County College. We have excellent professors, excellent advisors, counselors, and they help prepare the students, learn all that they need to be successful in college. So, when they finish at Tarrant County College and move on to UTA or U N T, they are extremely successful. And so, the panel discussion included myself, Ms. White, who is over the T3 right now, and Dr. Hurley, who is from Tarleton. So, our partnerships, we are nonpartisan. We partner with all the universities in the area and universities throughout the state. So, this was one example of many we can give you.
Thank you. Another matter is that I've discussed with the, or I've mentioned with the board, a legislative matter that the community college environment or the people have been working on to do something about the funding formula for community colleges, which we've been discussing this, taxes and so forth and so on. But it's, this is a continuing issue that needs to be worked on. And the commission set out its report, and it was in the Dallas Morning News, "Texas Needs to Revamp Community Colleges: Here's What They May Need." And the commission was established to make recommendations for consideration by the ADA Texas Legislature to establish a state funding formula and farming, funding level sufficient for sustaining viable community college education and training offerings throughout the state. State funding has been declining, unfortunately. In the past, I'm, as you know, I've been a member of the Community College of Association of Texas Trustees and we work with the professional organization called the TACC to discuss funding with the legislators. And in the last two sessions, we've been able to maintain a status quo. But you never know what's going to happen in the next legislative session. But this time, there's going to be a discussion about reforming the funding formula to make it more viable. Not only for, a lot for the smaller colleges, smaller college districts. Their, for better, for worse, for worse, their property values are not going up and their expenses are going up. So, part of this reform agenda is to stabilize and give more support to the smaller colleges as well as give support to us. And hopefully, to take the tax burden off our community and so forth and so on. So, I encourage you to look that up. Look it up on the CATT website or the TACC website to kind of look at the plan. And we will be talking to our legislators. Kenneth, you're on the Legislative Committee. And anybody, Jenny, if you want to be on the committee, that it's interesting because we go talk to the legislators and make our advocacy there. So, take a look at it. I would suggest that our audience also take a look at it because we understand about the tax problems that we have, that the tax problems that we have. And we're trying to make it better by reforming the funding formula. Right now, we have taxing districts, which are not the same as the servicing districts. The servicing district, we are one, because we're Tarrant County, but if you are in a rural county, you have a taxing district here and you have, and you're supposed to serve people who are not in the taxing district. So, it creates a problem. So, I suggest that all of you take a look at it, including our audience. And one last thing that is not on our agenda is that I had my dentist appointment and my dentist person to clean my teeth. Son went to TCC, the, the, no, not the hygiene program, the food program. Culinary arts, I'm sorry. And I met him because he was the next patient. And he is now, he said it was a wonderful, it's a wonderful project in the, in the north, in the Southeast Campus. And it's, we're redoing it, of course, I think, in our improvement program. But he is now a sous chef in a very, very notable restaurant here in Fort Worth now. So, he's, he's becoming a very, his next deal is to be a chef, I'm sure, to have his own restaurant. But anyway, that's my report.
Thank you so much. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Hornsby.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, just had the opportunity on a couple of weeks ago to take a tour of the East, Trinity River East campuses, where all of our health professionals, health professions are being housed. And it was such an amazing tour. I'd never been to the campus to see those items and those departments. I remember when the nursing department was on the South Campus. And, but to see what these students are being able to do by the new technology that's there. They even have some equipment that during COVID was, was used by John Peter Smith Hospital. They borrowed it from us so that they could use, help expand their services because they ran out of the machines. And we had the more, some of our machines were more up-to-date than the ones they had. So, they were really great. And then, they turned around and helped us out with our equipment. But to see the people in surgical technology, those individuals working in radiology, sonography, dental hygiene, just ophthalmology, those, all of those. There's about 15 different programs in health services over at that campus. And they're getting, these mannequins have all, do all bodily functions, can be manipulated so that they can have temperatures, they can have blood feed, they can sweat, they can, they blink their eyes, blink. I mean, these mannequins are amazing. There's one that delivers a baby. So, if you need to go see that, because you haven't had that experience and without the, without the other blood going, that'd be a good place to go and experience it. So, you know what it's like and you wouldn't have to be in the room with it when it really happened. And possibly pass out. But that was, that was an amazing, a good, very good tour. The staff did a great job. The students spoke very well and highly. They feel so prepared. On that table there, they can just, you can, they can go into any body part, look at anything, show you how it works and what to do. They just manipulate it and you get to see all veins and sinews and bones and everything. It's just really amazing what our students are able to see when they're working, when they're going into the health professions and how prepared they feel like they come out. Even with just patient care, learning how to speak when you come into the room, learning how to talk to the patients or to the patients' families, which becomes really important. So, that was a great tour. Just on today, I had the opportunity to go to Southeast Campus. They had Mercado Cultural, beginning of Hispanic Heritage Month. Their activity, I didn't get to stay a whole long time, but the students really seemed to be engaged. They had food there for them. They had salsa dancing and they had other things like that that were on the campus. So, they had, they started out a great time. I know the South had something, but it was at the same time the Southeast had, so I didn't get to go to those things. And I also was at a breakfast this morning at 7:00 a.m. with Dr. Coppola and Dr. Zena Jackson at, at the Jim Vashaskis Performing Arts Center of Mansfield Independent School District, which was included Dr. Cantu and many of her staff members. So, we had a great time this morning, beginning at 7:00 o'clock. So, here we are today.
Been busy today.
Madam Chairman, I, Kenneth, I'm going to tell one more story about the nursing. I know, I know that, I mean, but anyway, talking about the mannequin, I made a, we made a, I was making, we were making a tour with visitors to see the mannequin and everything else. And so, they invited me to come look at the mannequin. And I looked at the mannequin and with the bright eyes and everything like that. And the lady in the back pushed a button and the mannequin had a heart attack. Or something. And he was going by, you know, and all this stuff, all the bright lights came on. And Dr. Greenhill was just sort of sitting there and they said, "Oh, Mr. Greenhill, what are you going to do?" And I said, "I want to call the doctor." I also delivered a baby, so, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Did you hear, Dr. Morrison, poor baby? That's right. I'm glad you were able, I'm glad you were able to take that tour. You know, TCC with, with the first responders that we have out there working in so many capacities. There have also been some nurses that I know that have done very, very well and were able to get positions even before. I would say, Dr. Madison, when you say they're even, they're just waiting at the door to take some of our nursing students and our students from the Allied Health Program. So, that's, thank you to everyone involved in preparing those students.
There's a couple of places in town that only take TCC students for the training. They don't accept them from TCU, UTA, or any other place. They just take TCC students. So, that speaks well of our program.
It does. I'm glad you and Ms. Wood and Mr. Kind were able to enjoy it. Good. Mr. Kind?
I think we're going to pull up a video, but I will share. That was not what I was. Good one. It was, I think, we were, oh, a diabetic. We were, we were pretending that we were seeing things as a diabetic mate. So, that was, that was pretty profound. While we're pulling up the video for what I would love to talk about, I'll share just a personal story. So, I have an eighth grader who I love to talk about. She just finished running for Student Council President and she won. But what I took away from that whole experience was I was able to see her interacting with some people as she was convincing them to vote for her. And she shared that not only does she know about agendas and running meetings, she often watches her mother on TV during Tarrant County College meetings. So, it is a reminder that, that we are very aware that our constituents are always watching and listening to what we say. But it also reminded me that I think last Christmas, I shared what I was getting for my children as presents on a meeting. And I will not be doing that in the future. So, if Libby DeKind is watching, I know your tricks and I won't be doing that this year. On Monday, NBC 5 aired a segment on partnerships between area ISDs and Tarrant County College, specifically PTECs, which, for everyone who doesn't know the acronym, those are, that stands for Pathways and Technology Early College High Schools. Yes. And this particular segment focused on Fabian Ramirez, who was a graduate from Fort Worth ISD's Early Collegiate High School. And he is currently enrolled at TCC South. And what is really special about this particular segment is that it talks about not just the relationship between the school district and TCC, but it also talks about the wonderful partnerships that we have in terms of corporate partners and the city. So, it goes to explain his journey with Encore and with the city of Fort Worth's Water Department. And all of that has culminated in his current program enrollment, which is Encore is paying for his Tarrant County College tuition to finish his lineman certification. And in turn, Encore is also paying him for his internship there. So, when he is complete with his certification and internship, as a 19-year-old, he has the chance to enter the workforce making somewhere around $86,000 a year. I was not making $86,000 a year at the age of 19. But I think that that is, that is a name and a face to a lot of the things that we are talking about in terms of the economic impact that the programs that we have here at TCC and the relationships that we have across the county and how they are really impacting in a very positive way how our economy is recovering and growing. So, this is a great segment. I think we're going to be able to play it, or at least a portion of it.
It's fine. It's muted on the right. Oops. Did you see it on the right? Okay. See it at the bottom? There you go. Okay.
The trade industry continues to struggle with a shortage in skilled workers, especially in the jobs that help communities when it comes to our water and our electricity. In response to that, some local districts are expanding their programs that are creating a pipeline of talented workers to help with the labor shortage. NBC 5's Alana Quillan is live at Fort Worth Early Collegiate High School to explain more. Hi there, Alana.
Good morning. Yeah, these programs are known as PTEC or Pathways and Technology Early College High School. And they are unlocking potential for students that they never could have imagined, helping them to earn their high school diploma and their associate's degree at the same time. I talked to student Fabian Ramirez about this. He is getting a fast track on his career. He graduated from the PTEC program in Fort Worth ISD last year and spent the last couple of years before that taking special classes aimed towards a career with electricity. Encore, the Fort Worth Water Department, and Microsoft all have onsite classrooms that get students trained in jobs that they'll be able to work toward right after high school. Now Encore is paying for Fabian's trade school studies at TCC. Now Encore is paying for Fabian's trade school studies at TCC, he also gets paid for training and internships as a lineman, and now at just nineteen-year-old, nineteen-years-old, he told me he's already making more money than he ever could have imagined, all while helping the nationwide shortage for line workers.
But now, my dad could like, take a break from working a lot and not to help with some bills, and every once in a while could go out and take my family out to eat or something like that, like now we have, like I have the money for it, unbelievable, like I would have never thought that I would get a job like this, but TCC really made it happen.
Yeah, and you know, PTAC is nothing new, but the success is what's leading both Fort Worth and Dallas ISDs to add these programs to its top priorities. Both districts' outgoing superintendents have said growing these programs have been among their chief accomplishments. Fabian's principal says the base salary for linemen is eighty-six thousand dollars, and while these trade jobs are a lot of hard work, she says getting a head start on the training in high school is huge.
I'm nineteen, he's nineteen, and on a trajectory to have a solid foundation financially, no college debt, it's just gonna change their lives, it's just gonna give them different skills to navigate society, put them in circles that they need in order to build a stronger future for themselves and their families.
Now, Fort Worth now has fifteen PTAC programs in the school district and has plans to further expand the PTAC program at TCC this semester. Reporting live in Fort Worth, Alana Quillan, NBC Five.
Thank you so much for that report, and that is fantastic for those students, and I believe, Mr. Gates, you said that we would be getting some feedback, or I think Encore is gonna be coming to do a acknowledgement of the program and the impact that it's had, is that correct?
Yes, of course.
Okay, great, and that'll be in forthcoming meetings?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you so much, thanks, Mr. Kine. Mr. Barr?
And I was just, just sitting here thinking, I wanted to thank Dr. Morrison for bringing Kendall Locke, I think he's an example of, and, and the young man that Ms. DeKine, the video focused on, I think that's why we're here, and I think we're really making a difference in, in people's lives. Another way we're supporting our students is through the Tarrant County College Foundation, and I think many of you know that Ms. Ayala and I are, are members of the Foundation Board, and, and represent the, the Board of Trustees on that board. I'm very pleased to call attention to the fact that five hundred and nineteen students have received scholarship awards that have recently been announced by the Foundation, five hundred and nineteen students, and another two hundred and fifty-seven students received grants from the Student Emergency Fund, so that's almost eight hundred students that are getting financial support out of the Foundation. This Foundation's very important, I feel extremely good about where the Foundation is right now, the Board is, is strong and organized, and I really am optimistic that we're going to see significant changes and, and a lot more support for TCC students as a result of what is going on at the Foundation. I do wanna call attention that the, to the fact that the TCC Employees Cares Campaign runs from the first of October through the end of October, this, this campaign is very, very important to the Foundation, raises a lot of money from, from educators and people that work here at TCC, and, and their support of, of the TCC Foundation is extremely important, and that's what makes these scholarships possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
I also, I overlooked mentioning that Chancellor also serves on that board.
That's right, that's right. And also a reminder that the North Texas Giving Day is coming up in next week, I believe, Tuesday the twenty-second, so we want to remind everyone that our, the Foundation website has been updated, so if you have a specific fund that you would like to donate, there's some options out there, so we encourage everyone to take a look at that. So thank you for that report. So much of what the work that we do here obviously starts with outreach and making sure that we can reach out to students and to partners and let them know about the wonderful things that we're doing here at TCC. And recently, we had a group from the Office of Student Recruitment and Outreach, which was formerly the CAECO, is that right? Is that the Community Access and Community Outreach Group? They attended an event that was a back-to-school event at Diamond Hill Jarvis High School, they had an estimated number of four hundred people that they reached that particular day, they were distributing, disseminating information about programs, early college high school, the application processes, certificates, registration, it was just a tremendous outreach that they did, and that's just in one day and a few hours that they did at this event. I want to, there's a picture there, the event went from four to seven, and I want to thank Trustee Martinez for reaching out to TCC, she was instrumental in organizing this event from the Fort Worth ISD, and she asked about our interest, and so, again, want to thank all of our folks that were out there, again, we reached about four hundred people that one day, and so there were folks that were even inquiring about counseling and advising, so that is all in alignment with what we're doing as far as recruitment, retention, and completion, so thank you to all of those folks that are working in that capacity. And finally, just want to remind everyone that today kicks off Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs through October fifteenth, Mr. Hornsby already mentioned an event that he attended, it's a thirty-day period that's dedicated to honoring and celebrating the many contributions made by Hispanics that have shaped our country and strengthened our communities, and encompasses some twenty different cultures and nations, from Argentina, Bolivia, Chile, Colombia, Costa Rica, Cuba, Dominican Republic, Ecuador, Paraguay, Spain, Venezuela, Puerto Rico, and on, there's just numerous ones, so, TCC is a very diverse and a global community, so I want to remind each and every one of you to take some time to go to the website there, to see some of the events, and to celebrate the many trailblazers, and also just to celebrate the other industries also and the impact that folks have made. So, that's on my report, anyone else? Dr. Moore, do you have anything else? Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and go on to our new staff introductions, and that's you, Chancellor, please.
So, Shannon will be introducing our Director of Small Business Development Center.
Thank you, Dr. LeBlanc, trustees, good evening, I am Shannon Bryant, I am the Executive Vice President for Corporate Solutions and Economic Development here at Tarrant County College District, and as part of my responsibilities, I also help to lead, we are a host for the Small Business Development Center, and so I'm pleased to introduce all of you tonight to our new director, Mr. Rex Steele. Rex is no stranger to Texas, he's no stranger to entrepreneurship, nor is he any stranger to the SBDC office, Tarrant County is his fourth SBDC office. Rex comes to us from Lamar State College, University of Houston, Texas State University, and now arriving here at Tarrant County College. Rex has previously owned three different businesses in business brokerage, real estate and development, and retail, his work background has consisted of business consulting, manufacturing, strategic management, real estate, lean processes, construction and development, and exit strategies. He is well-versed to serve our clients here in Tarrant County. Rex also holds an MS in Engineering Management, and, as well as an MBA. He just recently moved to Fort Worth from New Braunfels, Texas, so please help me welcome Mr. Rex Steele.
Thank you, everybody, it is definitely a pleasure to be here. No rock collects moss, and so I move around quite a bit, it's been quite an adventure, and that's what I like, I've acquired a great team to work with, and I'm in a great area, I feel like, when you say Fort Worth, it's the epitome of Texas, and I like that a lot, being a Texan myself. We are looking at making some great changes to help produce more jobs, more businesses, startups, growth in the current businesses we have that have a significant impact on our, our community here at Tarrant County, and everything that we do at SBDC is a reflection on TCC, and we want to be the best that we can be at it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So next, it's my pleasure to introduce our Executive Director of Institutional Research, Dr. Holly Stovall. Dr. Stovall has a decade of experience routinely analyzing and presenting data on behalf of Tarrant County College's Office of Institutional Research. As Executive Director, she now builds, she now leads the IR team in providing decision support through proactive research, and engages the TCC community by emphasizing relevance and potential uses of findings. During her tenure as Director of Research, she served on three of the college's eight advisory panels, and led efforts to improve data accessibility using innovative approaches, including creating user-friendly dashboards and developing a state, a state use, state magazine-style IR journal. From developmental mathematics to graduate statistics, Dr. Stovall enjoyed teaching and served as an adjunct professor at UT Southwestern, she holds a master's in mathematics from Texas A&amp;M Commerce, a master's in statistics from Southern Methodist University, and a doctorate in statistics from Southern Methodist University. Please help me welcome Dr. Stovall.
Thank you, Dr. LeBlanc, members of the Board, I am very honored and excited to assume this new role. I started my career at TCC, and I am so grateful I have become part of this community. I look forward to enhancing data usage and conducting proactive research to support the institution. Thank you.
Next, Dr. Kenya Ayers-Palmore, President of the Northeast Campus, will be introducing her new Vice President for Student Affairs.
Thank you so kindly, I'm Kenya Ayers-Palmore, President, Northeast Campus, to our Board Chair, our Board members, and of course, to our Chancellor, interim Chancellor, Dr. Elvila Blanc, it is an honor to introduce our new Vice President for Student Affairs at the Northeast Campus, Teresa Craig, most recently served as Vice President for Student Success for Lone Star College in Houston, Texas. Lone Star College is one of the nation's largest Hispanic-serving community college systems, serving over ninety thousand students across seven campuses and ten centers. At Lone Star College, Ms. Craig led a division of a hundred and twenty part-time and full-time professional staff, providing student services, including enrollment, financial aid, advising, and many, many more, including Title III HSI supports. She is truly excited to join the TCC college team and the Northeast Campus. Mrs. Craig's strengths in leadership include the ability to build effective teams and leaders. She brings to the Vice President for Student Affairs role twenty years of local, state, and national leadership. Among those leadership opportunities, she served as Associate Vice President for Student Success and State Director for Adult Education for the Wisconsin Technical College System Board in Madison, Wisconsin. There, she had oversight for over sixteen two-year colleges, including federal and state budget responsibility and management, statute compliance, and aligning local, state, and national initiatives with a focus on data-informed solutions that impact equity and success for all students. There, she was also responsible for programs and staff in the administration of statewide student services, including disability accommodations, dual enrollment, veterans' services, diversity, equity, and inclusion strategies, and grants, also adult education, English language learner education, workforce development programs. It is my pleasure to bring Mrs. Craig forward, there is much more in your binder books, but I will say this for the record, we are so honored to have Teresa Craig join us, she carries a national reputation in this work that I think will make a tremendous impact for the college. The last thing I would share is that Mrs. Craig holds a bachelor's degree in Communication and Business from Concordia University, a master's degree in Adult Education and Distance Learning from the University of Phoenix, and is currently completing her dissertation through Edgewood College in Madison, Wisconsin. Her focus is on Crumbold's Happenstance Theory, there's one to research, as related to career development of women of color in student affairs, her plans are to complete her doctoral degree in 2023. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you all for this opportunity to join such tremendous college and district. Dr. Ayers-Palmore, it's truly my pleasure to work under your leadership, Trustee Ayala, Board of Trustees, Dr. LeBlanc, and all of our other attendees, again, I just can't express that it is my honor to be a part of this district and the leadership of the Northeast Campus. I look forward to assisting the ongoing great work that is already going on at the college as we continue to positively, positively impact our students, our community, and our employers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and welcome each and every one of you, we look forward to seeing you at future Board meetings and working closely with you as well. All right, we'll go on to item four A, I'm sorry, Consideration Approval of the Consent Agenda, we do have a slight revision, so I'm gonna have Ms. Susan Olinese explain that to us before we proceed.
Yes, so I'm gonna ask you to remove four F from the Consent Agenda, that is the annual review and approval of the investment policy and strategy, and the reason I want to do that is at your place, is there's one modification that I asked Ms. Bracken to make in, when we reformatted it to meet the TASB standards, on pages thirteen and fourteen, there was a reference to the mineral assets that are under management by the Foundation, that was an outdated number, and so we updated that. We also removed some unnecessary contact information for some of our staff that is no longer needed in this new format, so we'll just ask that you would take action on this item and approve it as amended by staff.
Any questions or clarifications for Ms. Olinese before we proceed?
We will proceed with the Consent Agenda as printed, as a group or individually?
We'll do it as a group, but with the amended, the amendment that you proposed with the removal of four F, is that correct?
Yeah, I would suggest you go ahead and take four F up right now and vote on it, and then you can take the, the Consent Agenda as a group without that item after that.
Thank you.
I move approval of the Consent Agenda with four F removed from the action.
Okay, so we'll have a motion from Mr. Barr, and a second from Dr. Morrison, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay.
Now we'll do four.
Perfect.
Okay, all right, so we need another, a motion, please, on the Consideration Improvement of the Consent Agenda.
No.
Of four F, as amended.
As amended.
As amended, is that sufficient?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
So moved.
So moved from Dr. Morrison?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you for that, have we covered all that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you, and thank you to you and your staff for all the information and for clarifying everything in advance for us, we appreciate that as well. Okay, Consideration Approval of the Individual Action Items, we'll have five A, Tarrant County College Participation in City of Halton City Tax Increment Financing Reinvestment Zone, number two, Ms. Olinese.
Yes, so the Board received a briefing last week at their work session by the, a representative for Halton City proposing the college's participation at fifty percent for thirty years in the tax increment reinvestment zone, we've included information that reflects the impact that it has to the non-participating members, like the school districts, but also the, the revenue that would be generated as a result of the enhanced development and public infrastructure. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions or clarifications, we had, did have a presentation on that, but does anyone have any questions, otherwise we'll entertain a motion.
Move to, second.
Mr. Hornsby, and second by Mr. Greenhill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item five B, City of Fort Worth Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, number nine, amended project and financing plan in Tarrant County College Participation Agreement, Amendment number two.
Yes, so the Board also received a briefing on this tax increment reinvestment zone by the City of Fort Worth representative last week. the City of Fort Worth representative last week. This is an existing zone and agreement that the college has been participating in for a number of years. However, the TERES Board, as well as the other members, are recommending the extension of the term of the TERES by an additional 10 years in order to support the debt program that was approved by voters with the Tarrant Regional Water District. And we included the same table that reflects the benefit that the college will achieve as well as the local school district.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that for Item 5B?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Greenhill?
Second.
Second by Dr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item 5C, Facility Lease Agreement with Fort Worth Independent School District for the New Early College High School Facility 4801 Marine Creek Parkway for a term of 30 years beginning in June of 2026 for a total of $11,200,000 in revenue.
Yes, so this particular partnership with Fort Worth ISD began more than four years ago when the college began planning for the redevelopment of the Northwest Campus. And you may recall, last week, we talked about that our first early college high school was actually on that campus and is named, I believe, one of the best high schools in Tarrant County at this point. And it's been a successful partnership, but they agreed to participate financially in the campus facilities. We've structured it as a lease over time to reflect the duration of the time that they'll be occupying that building, and so it's $11.2 million over that period, paid in increments at specific milestones, including their beginning of occupancy in 2026.
And specifically, we built a building that they will occupy.
That is correct. And this is revenue to us, not a payment to them.
Okay. In the existing facilities, Dr. LeBlanc, that was the first school, so how long has that? And it's mostly, I mean, temporary?
Right, so the existing facilities really are portable buildings. The other piece that's important related to our partnership with the public schools, so they would use the building during the day, and again, they are, they're students and our students. Those students are attending college classes as well as high school. We also are able to use the building in the evening for evening classes. So the building, we've learned to use the buildings throughout the entire day and evening, even with those partnerships, which we actually have on all of our campuses with other school districts. Fort Worth is one, but we actually partner with 19 different independent school districts.
Thank you. Any other questions or clarifications?
May I just say that, Dr., I believe I have this correct, LeBlanc was president of that campus when that early college high school originated. Very brave and bold move that she brought to us to implement the first early college high school. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that, that's right. And how many students did we have? We had one of the largest graduating classes, didn't we, this year?
So this past spring, we had over 500 students who earned their associate degree before they earned their high school diploma, and those represented the early college high schools throughout the five campuses. But we started, the first year, we started with 50 students, and Dr. Blankenbaker, we have close to 500 at the Marine Creek Collegiate, I believe.
Yes, we have about 380 this year.
Okay, about, close to 400. But the point is that it is a real game changer because most of those students would not have attended college otherwise, and they're finishing at Tarrant County College and frequently moving on to universities and certainly moving on to the workforce, so it's a big success.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, clarifications? Okay, we'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
That's Mr. Greenhill.
Second.
Second from Mr. Hornsby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Okay, we'll go on to Item 5D, Annual Approval of FY 2022-2023 Salary Schedule and Correction of Across-the-Board Pay Increase Application to Pay Grade 10.
Yes, so I distributed the salary schedule, and in the past, we have not historically required specific action by the board, but in the effort towards transparency, we would like to memorialize the salary schedule each year going forward. I will note that the chancellor does retain the flexibility throughout the year to make adjustments in terms of combining, adding, eliminating different job classifications and so on within that schedule. And as you know, that's going to be very important as we continue our work on the compensation and classification system. One look at it shows you some of the difficulty with the number of titles and so on that we're continuing to work to streamline and make more sense. In addition to adopting that, we've included a correction to the, to the...
Pay grade?
The pay grade, yes. Originally, we had said that we would have a smaller pay increase for the cabinet as well as pay grade 10 than the rest of the workforce. And recognizing some of the challenges with our pay grade structure, we determined that that was creating some inequities that we had not anticipated. It affects about 20 people. The total cost of making this adjustment is about $27,000 total for the year, so it's a small component of the overall compensation plan that we've planned, but this memorializes that correction that we've asked you to make.
If anyone have any, I think you, Mr. Kine, has a question.
I just wanted to make a comment about the background information that you've presented to this board about this action item over the last several weeks in meetings. I really appreciated the attention to detail in terms of putting this into context, not only here at TCC and within Tarrant County, but also in terms of comparing to what's happening at our adjacent college districts, especially given the fact that we have so many, we co-share so many adjuncts, especially across Collin and Dallas County districts. So I know that that was some additional work to do some comparison, but I think that geography really matters here in North Texas, and you've done a lot of effort to make sure that disparities and inequities will not be exacerbated by this particular increase.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Kine. Yes?
I don't think I heard you say, but I think it's very important that about the, this ratifies the rate of $15 an hour for student employees, and I think that's significant.
That's, that's correct. Student employment is a really important part of what we do here at the college. It gives students work experience as well as fulfills a need for labor that the college has. And so in order to be competitive in this very difficult labor market out there, we, for this fall, increased the rate to $15 an hour for those students, which is competitive with other types of jobs that they might otherwise be seeking out in the community.
That's good.
May I just comment this?
Yes.
I will say, perhaps in recent history, we haven't been presented this detail, but previously, we were. So it's a good thing.
Yes.
And I think I asked this before, but part-time salaries were also adjusted.
Yes.
Yes.
I think it's important that we make that perfectly clear.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
Any further questions or comments on that? And thank you for all of this detail. It was, I know we asked a lot of questions related to this, and so thank you, thank you for that. Thank you to the team for putting that together for us. Okay, if there are no further questions, we'll entertain a motion. So moved from Mr. Kine.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hornsby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item 5E, A Resolution Providing for the Levy and Collection of an Annual Ad Valorem Tax of .13017 per $100 of valuation on all property within the boundaries of Tarrant County College District on January 1st of 2022.
Yes, as discussed earlier, the required public hearing, you were presented a budget as well as a proposed tax rate in August, and you adopted the budget. We've gone through the necessary steps in order for you to consider this tax rate, and so we have it before you with a proposed resolution.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? I do want to, if I can, make just a couple of comments, and thank you for staff for getting some of these details for me to clarify this. The past several years, the college has had annual savings that made significant contributions to the fund balance. This was intentional, as we planned for operating income to support the full debt program to address inflationary pressures on the bond program, where we have lost about 28% of our buying power. Also, last week during the work session, and prior to that, we received a briefing that identified $2 billion in capital needs going forward that we will continue to prioritize and to plan. And also going forward, and adopted, the adopted operating budget reflects the objective for the current income to support current operations with significantly less cushion than in past years as we had prepared. We are being, we prepared, rather, we are being fiscally prudent to ensure that we are balancing our ability to take care of our built environment and to attract and retain a quality workforce, and most importantly, to meet the needs of the community and the Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, otherwise, we'll entertain a motion.
And I provided specific motion language for you to use.
I'll make the motion. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .13017 dollars per $100 of valuation, which is effectively a 7.9% increase in the tax rate. That is the language that we're required to adopt under the state law, although it's misleading. But I make that motion, and I'd like to make a few comments after, assuming it's seconded.
I second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Barr and a second by Mr. Greenhill, and you had additional comments?
Yeah, I just sat here and did some calculation a minute ago. We've heard a lot of people expressing concern tonight, and I think the board has listened, and the board hears what's being said. But I also just ran some numbers sitting here. The no-new revenue that we are proposing, keeping the tax rate at the same level, does result in more revenue. On a piece of residential property worth $200,000, it's $18.98 a year. That's 5.2 pennies a day. On a $250,000 house, it's $23.72 a year, or 6.5 cents a day. On a $1 million house, it's less than $95 a year, or about a quarter, 25 cents a day. Given the stories we've heard here tonight about how lives are being impacted by what we're doing at Tarrant County College, I think that's a pretty good buy. I ran for this board in the first place out of concern about our workforce and our base of employment in this community. I said for a long time, going back over the last 20 years, the biggest thing that was going to hold us back here in Fort Worth and Tarrant County was having a skilled workforce. Tarrant County College does as much as any institution, organization in Tarrant County to build that workforce. And people that are here tonight and may be listening on TV have heard, or over the internet, have heard a lot about the positive things that are going on. It takes money to do these things. It's unfortunate, the language that the legislature adopted says we are increasing the tax rate, when in reality, we are not increasing the tax rate. Does it generate more revenue? Yes, it does. Is that revenue important? You bet it is. I tried to explain to somebody the other day, we are using, our enrollment's up, we've created some new positions. What we're trying to do is to pull more of the young people in this community into enrollment in Tarrant County College so they can get a better education and be more successful in building for themselves and their families for the years to come. And I think the young man that spoke, that Dr. Morrison brought, is an example of that. He's on a whole different plane. The young man that was in the video, we're making careers for people, and the thought that a nickel or a dime a day is going to, is more important than, that cutting the tax rate is more important than educating these people, I find very offensive. I think we're doing the right stuff.
You're out of order. Yeah, so are you!
Excuse me.
So are you!
Would you please?
It's the principle of the thing. You're raising taxes and telling us you're not.
I conclude my remarks by saying I support this. I think it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Thank you.
Mr. Green, did somebody else have any comments?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second on the floor. Now we'll go, no further comments, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay, thank you for your comments. We'll go ahead and go on to Item Number Six, the monthly financial reports. Ms. Olinese?
Yes, so I believe this will be the last time you see the typical financial report that you've been receiving. We actually will close this year's financials, we'll freeze it for the audit starting tomorrow for the end of the year. What you were provided with a budget this year also included a budget by function, so we can see very clearly by each of the cabinet members' areas of responsibilities how we're performing compared to budget. We'll be coming back to you next month with this in that format. I will tell you that we do have savings in the current year with a number of vacancies that we have at this time. We, however, will be using a portion of fund balance due to the funding of the new ERP system that is going into place, which is a big investment that the college needs to make in our technology and the foundation of our operations. However, we are on track. But you can see that we've got a use of fund balance of about $27 million overall is what we're projecting. Once we freeze the financials, we'll bring back a fuller report with an explanation of how this year went.
Thank you for that. Any questions or clarifications for Ms. Olinese? Okay, thank you for that update. Go on to Investment Report. I think we have a presentation. That is Mallory Sampson.
That is correct. So we committed to you some time ago to bring you a quarterly report that would allow our investment advisors to share with you how they are performing compared to benchmarks. This is part of our contract when we went under active management with the intent to make sure that we're using our resources wisely, particularly our bond proceeds, to make sure we're defraying the cost of using those resources. So I have Mallory Sampson on the line, and she'll walk you through the quarterly report.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. It's nice to see you all. Thank you for having me. Today, I'm going to provide a brief market update, touch on the portfolio, and then answer any questions you have, as well as provide a few recommendations.
Ms. Sampson, could you hold for just a second, please? We're just trying to make sure we've got some things distributed here, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, this is, this information is for, right after this, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Sampson, thanks for your patience. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. So we'll start with the market update. 2022 overall has been marked by increased volatility across all asset classes. This is due in part to a global economic slowdown, fears of the United States entering a recession, and disjointed pandemic recovery. One of the main drivers of... One of the main drivers of that increased volatility is inflation. The Federal Reserve is aggressively increasing interest rates, and has been clear that they'll continue doing so to curb inflation. They're doing so with the attempt to not destabilize the labor market. The impacts of these rate hikes, specifically in the fixed income market, have had both positives and negatives. On the positive side, we're benefiting from the increased yield environment. Your portfolios are benefiting from that, and we'll see that shortly. On the negative, the existing securities, which are issued prior to the rate hikes, have experienced a shock in their market value. You are also experiencing that, which I'll point out for you. Looking forward, we expect continued volatility as the Federal Reserve and lawmakers attempt to control inflation while not stifling economic growth. I'll draw your eyes to a few areas here on the portfolio. Let's start on the far left. You'll see the name of the specific portfolios. The highlighted blue are the portfolios that PFM is managing on your behalf in an active way. To the right, you'll see a column for the yields. You'll see some of the benefits that we've been seeing there. We've recently updated some of these yield calculations, so they're a bit more present-looking and more accurate for you. How are these yields doing comparatively? If you look below, you'll see the weighted average yield of the entire, all of your assets, and this is including roughly 29%, which are in pool products, are... Have a current yield of 2.44%. The number below is a proxy for cash, so you can see the benefit added there. The figure below that, the one-to-five-year U.S. Treasury index, is a proxy for a longer-term portfolio. So I'm comfortable and happy with these numbers with the active management. Transitioning up to the change in market value column, you'll see the shock to the market value that we were speaking of earlier. I'm not concerned with this volatility. There is and will always be some type of volatility in the fixed income market. Yes, 2022 has been the worst year for the fixed income market in 40 years, but I'm not concerned about this movement. Lastly, I'll draw your eye all the way to the right so you can see the percentage of the distribution. I bring your eye to this because we're going to be talking about the pools for cash at the top, that 29%. Since we've seen you last, we've been working on... We've been working on and completed two projects with your team. First is taking a look at that 29% in pool products to see if it can be allocated into the core portfolio. A percentage can be allocated into the core portfolio while still maintaining a very conservative portfolio and accounting for expected and unexpected future cash flow needs. We've completed that project, and I'll update you on that shortly. The second was upon the issuance of your 2022 bonds, recommending that go into an active management program, and that is to match your spending timeline and hopefully add additional yield to those assets. What that translates to is, first, we'll talk about the first project. We've identified $133 million within your pool assets, which can be moved into the core portfolio. If you look at under the percentage of total under current, you'll see how that's reflected from an allocation standpoint. You'll also see that reflected from a market value standpoint and how our advisory fee changes because of that. The idea on the far left is we're wanting to move from an average current yield of 2.39% down to the future core portfolio of 3.38%. So we'd like to shift $133 million from the pool products into the core portfolio. The second was active manage the bond proceeds. You can see that reflected in... On the far right, under the PFM advisory fee, how that's the change from 0 to 86,000. We're moving from an average current yield of 2.18% to 3.07%. So these two changes overall, I'm expecting them to shift our total weighted portfolio yield to... From 2.44% to 2.90%. So that is roughly 0.50% overall. However, that represents $5 million in added yield. Another way to look at this transition, if we start at the before, you'll see the pools for cash starting out. The 2020 bond proceeds were commingled here, and we've put together the core portfolio. Current state, we pulled out those bond proceeds. You'll see a line item here for the 2022 bond proceeds, and the core portfolio and the pools for cash has dropped down. Moving to the right, you'll see our desire to shift the balance between the core portfolio and the pool products. That was the completion of my prepared remarks. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Sampson. Any questions or clarifications?
Just one comment.
Yes, sir.
The public may not know that we're dealing with a market that's very difficult, but we also have to deal with the Public Funds Investment Act, which for certain purposes restricts how much we can invest in more advanced investments. And I think they do a very good job. I think our advisors do a very good job in dealing with the Public Funds Investment Act, which is pretty restrictive in what we can do with our investments.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up.
And all of us have had to take a course in the Public Funds Investment Act, so we know what's going on in that act. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Ms. Sampson, anything else? Any questions for her, clarifications, before we let her go? Okay, thank you for that update. We look forward to hearing from you again very soon.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we go into item seven, interim chancellor's report?
Yes, interim chancellor's report.
Yes, thank you. So I hope you take time to review all the good work that's taking place on the campuses. It's quite impressive, including some of our students getting top scholarships that are allowing them to continue their education after they complete their work at Tarrant County College, and also some very exciting programs that are taking place throughout the college that highlight the students. So I hope you take time to review that. Also, in the envelopes that you received this evening, this is information for discussion at the October session. And basically, it speaks to the successes of the last six months. Moving forward, we're building on our successes in addressing several critical initiatives such as the ERP implementation, et cetera, which will allow us to move forward. I do... I am really pleased that our enrollments have increased a little over 7%. We have 43,500 this fall, and that is really the 16-week courses. We still have 12-week and eight-week courses that students are registering for, and we are quickly reaching the enrollments we had prior to the pandemic. The strategies that are being implemented in our recruitment and retention efforts have increased our enrollments, and I'm very confident that we will exceed the pre-pandemic enrollments in short time. Also, significant is our fall-to-fall retention to degree-seeking first-time-in-college students. That has increased from 51% to almost 61%. It's huge percentage increase for a short period of time. And I do believe that it has to do with everyone's hard work and efforts in making sure that the students are having a positive experience. So Monday, I started... Susan, Hollenes, Gloria Maddox, Pauline, and myself, we started our campus tours. We started here at Trinity River, and we had over 300 employees participate. And I'm optimistic that we will have similar numbers at future when we go to the other campuses. We also gave all the employees an opportunity to do a virtual employee survey to give us feedback. And then we gave the students an opportunity for a student survey. The students get to have a little more fun. When they fill out the survey, they get to participate in a raffle, and they get a free lunch. So it... Yes, you'll want to find out about those surveys on the different campuses. Also, I want to alert everyone that The Reach magazine is available online, and we will be making hard copies, but it's available to everyone. One of... All of the articles are magnificent. One of the articles was written by our faculty about the work that they are doing in order to better serve our students, and I thought that was pretty powerful, and I hope you take time to see that. And then finally, there were some excellent questions asked at the work session about what is the college doing for the mental health of our students. And you received a memo this evening explaining all the different things that are taking place on every campus over and beyond the care teams that we talked about last week. So I'm very proud of the work that everyone's doing and like to give you a friendly reminder of the excellent work that's taking place. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. LaPont. You know, several months ago, we asked you to stay focused on the outcomes, student outcomes and faculty, and thank you for staying the course. And all the work that's going into that, it's evident because we're retaining, which is very, very good. So thank you, and to everyone involved in all your efforts in recruitment, retention, and student outcomes, and faculty, and things like that. So it's very, very important. So thank you to everybody.
You're looking at the leadership team right over there in the audience.
So thank you. Thank each and every one of you for your help. Okay, let's see. We'll go on to our closed session. Oh, well, actually, we have 7C, the 12-month calendar. Is that something, Susan, that you're going to review, or you just want us to be aware of it?
Just be aware. We'll continue to update these every month. The only thing we've added at this point is the retreat on November the 5th, I believe, has been nailed down, so that's been updated on this document.
Okay, all right. So if there are no further items there, we'll move into our closed session. And let me see, I have something to read here. There is none? It is. Okay, all right. So there's no closed session. There's no further information here. I think our next board meeting is going to be October 13th of 2022, which is going to be our work session. And we will entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. I have Dr. Morrison, and will you second that, Mr. Hornsby?
Second.
You'll second it. Okay. Thank you, everyone. We wish you a good evening and wish you continued success and a great school year. Thank you.